According to national statistics, one in every three American homes is affected by substance use disorder, and only one of every 10 persons who needs treatment receives treatment. You might not know it, but someone you know or care about could be suffering in silence. Offering your hand of support can be crucial to getting that person connected to care and recovery. To learn more or to get help, come see me. I'm Mireneal O'Leary. I'm here to help, and so is the city of Waterbury.
Good evening and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education workshop this Thursday, September 2nd, 2021. We will begin with a silent prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Ruffin, is there anyone that you wish to indicate or memorialize this evening?
Not at this time, Commissioner, but at our next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. So we will have a silent prayer. All right. Thank you. Let everyone, let's do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very, very much. All right. So with that, let us begin with, we have no one that wishes to address the board, just checking again to make sure. No public speaking, so we will begin with Attorney Shaw with items one and two. The committee of the whole appointment of Dr. Sam as school medical advisor, okay, per general statutes 10-205, and item two, Attorney Shaw, which is the request for approval of the professional services agreement with Dr. Sam. You are on.
Thank you, Vice President Harvey. Good evening, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin. Agenda item number one is requesting appointment of Dr. Sam as the school medical advisor pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, section 10-205. At this time, the school medical advisor for several years, Dr. Rakowski, has announced his retirement, has in fact retired, but has agreed to stay on on a per DM basis until we make this appointment. So Dr. Sam, who has been vetted by the Health Department and by the Health Department disposition, provided we appoint him this evening, I believe later in a special meeting. We are required by statute as a municipality with over 10,000 citizens to have a school medical advisor. So we do need to have one. We currently have one who's holding over. At this point, Dr. Sam also requires a contract. So item number two would be request approval for a professional services agreement. You will note in that agreement that it is for a period of, I believe it's 60 days. It runs through October 31st. We have currently a bid waiver. It's a temporary bid waiver to have an RFP here, to put out an RFP, and I believe that's being worked on in order to have bids for a school medical advisor. The Health Department is taking care of that. But at this point, we do need to appoint someone so that we have school medical advisor in place and a professional services contract that covers that in terms of all of the insurance and indemnification and other contracting requirements of the city. Does anyone have any questions?
All right, and we'll go through the chairs. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, Commissioner Stango. Commissioner Stango.
Okay. Okay. Is this is this position a full-time position or part-time position in the city or?
Commissioner Stango, excuse me, can everyone, if you're not speaking, mute your lines, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Stango. Commissioner Stango.
All right, I got you.
Okay, got it.
All right. Thank you. Attorney Shaw, is this position for Dr. Sam a full-time position or a part-time position or on-call? Or how is it laid out?
I believe school medical advisors are advisory positions. This contract itself provides a maximum compensation on an advisory basis that could be paid out under the contract. I believe it's $5,000 to be paid out in $2,500 monthly payments. But it's not a full-time city physician. It in fact is not a city physician. It is a contracted advisor that we are required to have pursuant to the statute that's stated there.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Hold. Any other questions? Just wave if you have a question. All right, I don't see anyone waving. All right. Commissioner Hernandez, are you waving or you're just, okay. All right, so Attorney Shaw, I think you're, I think you're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so item number three, do we, this is a committee of the whole request for Joseph Parisi for the Willby Alumni Association to name Willby High School tennis courts. Is Mr. Parisi, has he joined us? Via phone? All right, if there are any questions, Commissioners, would you direct those?
There are, there's a few phone calls. Let's give them a minute, maybe they'll need to unmute. There's two numbers that I don't recognize, so.
All right.
They unmute.
Okay, have they, have they unmuted?
No, so just make sure that he wasn't on. Sometimes I would challenge unmuting on the phone.
All right, so the way we're going to do this is, Commissioners, if you have any questions, would you direct those questions to our Secretary Kerry Swain, and we will address those questions with Mr. Parisi. All right, and so with that, we will move on to the committee on, let's see, finance. And that is request for approval of amendment one to the amendment with Connecticut Junior Republic Association, Inc. to provide services for students with disabilities. So Pugon, M. Pugon, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, how are you?
Good evening, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin. Tonight I have three items for you on the agenda. The first one is an amendment to the contracts admitted between Waterbury, the city of Waterbury, and the Connecticut Junior Republic Association. This is a three-year contract. This is the third year of the contract. However, we are asking, respectfully requesting that it be amended to increase the total amount of the contract to cover tuition for additional students. And the increase is, was provided, it's increasing the total amount from 348,204 to, or it's increasing it to that, that the previous amount was 273,204.
Okay, this is, we're on item number four, so are there any questions? Item number four.
I see a hand. I see a hand.
There's a hand waving. Okay, just identify yourself and go ahead, Commissioner Hernandez.
Commissioner Brown, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner Hernandez, then Commissioner Brown, sorry, Commissioner. Go ahead, Commissioner Hernandez.
How many, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, yes.
How many more additional students are we talking about?
We currently have four students there. This, this type of program, the students have, they fluctuate. So because it's a three-year contract, there have been a difference. The number of students every year changes. There's currently four. However, because we are in the last year, we've realized that we were short on the funding for the program for the students who will remain there this year.
I believe, I believe it covers the cost of the two additional, more than we anticipated three years ago. It's two more than we anticipated three years ago, Commissioner Hernandez.
I think that's what it says, yeah. Yeah, there's two additional.
Okay, Commissioner Hernandez, did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Brown.
Yes, along the same lines, are these full-time students year-round? Is transportation included in this?
I don't believe so. Oh, sorry, I thought you were done, sorry.
No, okay.
I don't believe transportation is always included. I think we had discussed that in one of the previous amendments that I had brought forward. But, but to answer the first question, yes, it is typically a full-year, full-time scenario where the students are attending.
Okay, but it's not a boarding school, right? You're not.
No, 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 no. When I say full year, what I mean is that oftentimes it's a school year and then also like ESY, so there's some summer services typically included.
Okay, and these are special needs students?
Yes, special needs. So to answer your question about boarding, they don't live there. It's a day program.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? All right, please just wave so I can see you. All right. All right, so I guess we'll move on to item number five, please. And that is to discuss the amendment number, amendment two to the agreement for the University of St. Joseph.
Yes, that's also on my agenda here. And so we respectfully request the amendment to the contracts admitted between the city of Waterbury and University of St. Joseph, also known as the Genghis Center. And so this again is a special education placement, day school for students with disabilities. The students who attend are full-time students. And we are asking, and again, an amendment to increase the total amount of the contract due to additional students in the program.
All right, thank you. Item number five, any questions? Okay, I don't see anyone waving. All right, so let's go on to item number six, please.
Okay, and this is my final request here. Respectfully requesting that we're to consider amending the contract between the city of Waterbury and Attlebrook. Attlebrook is another specialized school for students with special needs. The students who attend, attend full-time. It is a three-year contract that we have with them. This is the last year. And we are asking again for an increase due to additional students attending this program as well.
Very good. All right, questions? Comments? All right, I think we are all set. Thank you very, very much.
Commissioner Harvey, I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Pavon, is this increase, how are you? Is this increase due to the shortages in the special ed staff at our schools by any chance?
No, no, these are students, like I said, that have been there. And so these are not a result of recent placements there due to staff shortages. Now, the students are there. And when we are, because we're in our final year, we are looking at, you know, what's left in that pocket of money for the contract, and we realize that it's not going to be enough, so we want to be prepared to make sure that we cover the costs.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any additional questions? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number seven, appreciate it. We'll move on to item number seven, Committee on Finance. This is a request approval for the contract with the Connecticut Educational Network to provide fiber lease for internet access, and this is Will Zuda. Thank you, Will.
Good evening, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin. Department of Education respectfully request your approval of the above referenced contract for five years totaling $71,700. Comes out to $14,340 per year for a fiber lease for internet access between the city of Waterbury and Connecticut Educational Network. This contract was initiated under a request for proposal, RFP number 6995. There were two comprehensive bidders for this project, the Connecticut Educational Network and Crown Castle, with Connecticut Educational Network being the most qualified and responsible bidder. This agreement will require that the vendor build out and install a fiber network that will provide internet access to a secondary location. A second connection will provide bail over for our voice-over IP phone system. If the primary link fails, so automatically switch to a backup connection and automatically route calls and limiting disruption.
Very good. All right, question, thank you, Mr. Zuda. Any questions? Comments? Okay, I don't see anyone. All right. Okay, Mr. Zuda, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we will move on to item number eight, Dr. Ruffin, Superintendent's update.
Thank you, Vice President Harvey, and thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to speak with you very briefly but thoroughly this evening on the superintendent's update, which are matters that are very much of interest to all of you. I will tag team with members of my team as we talk about four areas, especially as we're beginning the new 21-22 school year. We have been very excited to welcome our students back on August 30th, and we're very pleased to share the information that we're sharing as well as some of the challenges that we're experiencing at this time. I will speak with you specifically about enrollment, transportation update, and updates on the COVID guidelines and communication protocols as well as staffing. To begin with, during the summer, I believe that Waterbury was definitely on the right track to provide summer opportunities for our students in anticipation that we would welcome back all of our students in the fall. As a result of our summer activities, which engaged our students in summer camps, in STEM programs, in coding programs, and opportunities for enrichment as well as acceleration, and in some areas, the traditional summer schools as well as ESY, we're very pleased that through this summer program, we believe that we were able to fulfill one of the goals of our opening the school year is that our students would return in person. Our current enrollment for the 2021-22 school year as of this date is currently 18,503 students. To compare that with where we were last year at this time in October, our October 1st enrollment was at 18,353 students. As we visit schools, and my staff and I have visited all of the schools, at some point during the first day of school, all schools were visited, and we continue to visit schools to make certain that we are always present in the schools, which is where the action is occurring. We are pleased to see that our students have returned and that they are engaged in their lessons with their teachers, and we are very pleased that we were able to achieve that milestone, because if you will remember last year, approximately 50% of our students remained virtual. And so with all of our students returning in person, we were very pleased, and yet we understand that we have a lot of work to do as we continue to navigate COVID. Additional information that you will want to know is that we have approximately 286 students that have transferred in from another district at this time, and that we have approximately 66 students that have transferred to us from another state or country, for a total of 352 students that have come to us from some other school besides Waterbury last year. At the very beginning of the school year, Monday specifically, we encountered several challenges. And we knew prior to Monday that we were, as we were in conversation with our transportation department, that there was a shortage of employees, a shortage of bus drivers. What we did not know was the full impact that this was going to have as schools opened on Monday, August 30th. And we have certainly felt some of the challenges that were a result of having many areas that were not filled with active employees. We are currently approximately 15 driver short, the bus companies are. You'll remember, the two bus companies that we work with are contracted bus companies, and one of them was having a particularly challenging time with filling all of the bus driver positions. In COVID, as we've been navigating for the over 16 months, we know that this has affected every fiber of our being, from the way that we've traditionally done business, to the way that we educate children, to the way that we employ people, and to the way that we have shortages in critical areas that we are not able to fulfill positions. The bus companies have felt that as well. And, and so the staffing updates that we have to share with the members of our board tonight is that the shortage of drivers, we currently have 125 buses for student transportation, and that's what we employ. We're currently short of 16 drivers, which is approximately 13% of our routes that are currently unmanned. The bus company is doubling routes where space is available and making multiple runs for bus routes that don't have a driver. As of today, two new bus drivers started, and we anticipate six more drivers will be available and coming onboard for tomorrow's runs. There are 25 drivers currently in the pipeline. This is what the bus companies are sharing with us. Jeff Hunter, as well as, I believe, Mr. Will Zuda are in conversation with executive members of the bus company to make certain that there's regular updates. But we are understanding that there are approximately 25 drivers that are in the pipeline. That does not mean that 25 drivers qualify to be hired. They're simply in the pipeline at this time. And there's a process of onboarding that has begun, and the bus company anticipates having all of the current vacancies filled by the time that we return from Labor Day. The onboarding process, again, across the nation, we're seeing some delays in onboarding. But at this time, something that typically took three to four weeks is currently taking six to eight weeks because of COVID and because of DMV and other, other delays that may have been a consequence of some of the effects of COVID. And currently also with the bus companies, we anticipate that there will be six drivers that will be coming in from New York that could possibly cover additional runs should the need occur. More or less a substitute or a backup plan if, when all of the drivers have been hired to fill the 16 vacancies, that in the absence of one or more bus drivers, that we would have at least six others as a backup to fill any vacancies that we may have moving forward. As, as we, as we go on to look at some of the challenges that we've experienced this week, and we've seen this in grand form, the shortages of drivers have caused many delays, delays in pickup, delays in delivery of children, and families have been concerned, rightfully so, when their children were going to be arriving home. We recognize that that has been a deep concern for parents, and it is a concern for us as well. We've also determined some of the root causes of some of the delays so that we could mitigate that with actions. We have seen that some of the delays have also been a result of the number of students that are being dropped off. Typically, we would have students maybe riding a bus or maybe walking, and we have a larger number this year than ever, where parents are dropping them off in vehicles. And some of our school entry and exit procedures have not been accustomed to accommodating so many drivers in and out of the school. We've made accommodations for that. I know Dan Berry has been out on a daily basis, morning and afternoon, to help facilitate some of the traffic issues that we've had. And we've had cooperation of SROs and also our police department and teachers and staff as well. Some of the delays have also occurred because it is a requirement that pre-K through second grade students are picked up or at the bus stop by a parent. And so if a parent forgot or a parent was not able to be there, that delayed the drop-off for the student because it is our bus company's responsibility to assure that students are dropped off with their appropriate adult before they are left at the bus stop. Also, bus driving students back to the schools before moving on to their next run. If there was something that caused a delay or a child didn't get on the bus, the bus had to turn around and make certain the student rode the bus. It wasn't a matter of just waiting for that student to be picked up at a later time. That continued to create some delays. And as we continue to navigate this, we want everyone to be aware that picking up students and blocking bus access to the schools can also cause some additional delays. We believe most of these have been trouble shot this week because, because we've seen some of the delays and we're able to address them as we move forward. We've also seen an improvement in our daily communication with the bus company and with school leaders. And we've also seen an improvement in the bus company communicating with families and the school if there was going to be a delay, especially a delay that was going to perhaps cause concern for the parents. We define clear communication protocols when a bus is late or when an overflow bus needs to be sent to the school to pick up students and to communicate with the bus, that bus information with our parents and guardians. And we've utilized Parent Square as, as well as other means of communication to make certain that that information was delivered timely for the parents and to the schools. And Jeff Hunter and Dan Berry are visiting problematic schools to correct traffic issues and develop traffic flow patterns to alleviate traffic issues. For some of our schools, this is more problematic than others. That's why they've identified the schools that are the most challenged are the streets or the areas that are most challenged, and they are working with that on a regular basis, daily. We also have protocols for communicating COVID and COVID guidelines and COVID communication. I want to share with our Commissioners that the COVID protocols have become even more complex this year. And, and while this slide gives a very small glimpse of what, what we do, I want to, I want to just share with you that the amount of work that goes in before, during, and after anyone is tested positive or has tested positive for COVID is a very long process, which involves the Health Department, the school, the child, the family, to be able to effectively do contact tracing. And Will Zuda, I don't know, you would like to cover this slide with the board, please?
Sure. So the current COVID guidelines and communication protocol for students and staff. So if a student or a staff member is confirmed to have a case of COVID-19, we require that the parent or staff member must provide documentation from their healthcare provider of a PCR COVID-19 test. Then we follow the following protocol, which we reactivated immediately once we identified a close contact or a positive. The principal will investigate, identify any close contacts, and they will immediately notify the school nurse. And that school nurse will notify the contact tracing team to initiate contact tracing to identify close contacts. As defined, we, we, close contact is defined as spending at least 15 minutes within one day and within three feet for a student that's in a classroom setting only, and then within six feet for all other settings of a person with a confirmed diagnosis of COVID-19 during their infectious period, or having direct contact with an infected person's droplets. Go to the next slide. So principals, once they've identified a positive or a close contact, they will complete the appropriate contact tracing form. If that contact tracing form has all the relevant information on there, so we know exactly who tested, when they tested, and who was a close contact based on their investigation. And then that, that completed form is sent to the, is emailed to me and other designated staff. And then if it's a staff member that's tested positive or is identified as a close contact, that completed form is sent to designated staff in the Human Capital Office, and they work with positive staff members. After we've identified a positive case in the school or a contact of a positive in the school. or a contact of a positive in the school, we will ensure that proper sanitizing of affected classrooms in common areas of the entire campus. In either case, we always make sure that we notify the families and the school staff through various communication methods while maintaining confidentiality.
Thank you, Will. I want to go back to that slide before I move on to the Human Capital slide. We are very much aware that when, and we were before the beginning of the school year, that if all of our students returned in person, the three feet apart was not going to be something that we could guarantee to anyone. And as a matter of fact, with the guidance from the state and the guidance from all of the different organizations that we work with, it was suggested that it's three feet. It's not a mandated three feet. But we knew that when all students returned, three feet at all times was not going to be possible. What we've made certain that we did was to make sure that everyone wore masks, and our staff and our students do wear masks. So we have identified some key areas of concern, cafeteria being one, hallways that are many times crowded with students that we have been working on. And every school is working on that differently because every school is designed differently. As an example, to reduce the number of people that are in the hall at one time, school principals are working with their staff to make certain that students are not all dismissed at the same time. Likewise, different passages and different hallways and different traffic flows are being developed for schools to assure that the areas where students are going to congregate are not going to be so crowded, while we still continue to practice mask wearing and of course, the other important factors in making certain that everyone is kept safe, washing your hands, making certain that everywhere possible that there is social distancing and making certain that we are not congregated in areas that are very tight for an extended period of time. I have seen some of the schools as they work through some of these challenges. And I want to assure everyone that the schools are working on that. But we recognize that is an area that we are going to continue to work on and to improve on as time goes along. But I'm very proud of the schools for the way that they are trying to address this, including the lunch periods and where possible to increase the lunch period, to add another lunch period. I want to add that it's not always possible to add another lunch period, especially for a high school that may already have four lunch periods. So we are trying to navigate these challenges that we are aware of, and we're not making light of it. We are addressing it, and it may take a day or so or maybe even more than a week to be able to mitigate some of the challenges that we face as we continue to navigate what we believe is a successful opening of school, but at the same time brought about some challenges with everyone being back in the building. We are also aware that part of that is last year, we had approximately 50% of our students that returned in person. And this year, we don't have that. We have majority of our students, if not all of them, that are returned in person. And where we have any extenuating circumstances, we do have protocols in place, a practice in place, along with the health department, where every request for any extenuating circumstances is being reviewed by healthcare professionals as well as our team here in Waterbury to make certain that we are fair and consistent in making decisions as we move forward. Our next slide has to do with the Human Capital Staffing Report. I always endorse seeing these every time that they've come out in social media. And so, Mr. Mendoza, if you'd like to cover this, I know this is your department, and you take a lot of pride in what you've done. But I am always excited to see our new staff as they come onboard and the creative ways that our Human Capital Department has really taken the lead in this.
Good evening, Dr. Good evening, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners and Dr. Ruffin. I'd like to briefly just share some of the current status of our staffing efforts this year. Our Human Capital Office has been extremely busy this summer. And in total, for this school year, we have hired 124 teachers and 23 administrators, for a total of 147. On this slide, we've highlighted just a few of the new teachers that have joined our team. These are brief snippets that we have been sharing through all of our social media platforms. We want to make sure that we're highlighting our new teachers. Next slide. When looking at our new hires at a glance, we have hired seven teachers who identify as two or more races, seven teachers who identify as Asian, nine as African American, 13 as Hispanics, and 112 as white. This equates to 25% of our new staff being of color and 75% white. Unfortunately, our numbers of staff of color could have been a little bit higher this year and possibly would have been 31%. However, we had 10 teachers of color who declined positions when we offered them because they were offered more money in other districts. As you know, teachers of color are in extremely high demand across the state of Connecticut and the country. And then every district is really competing against itself, against one another. On this slide, we also had an opportunity just to highlight some more of our new teachers as well. Next slide there. Throughout the past year, we're presenting all of our efforts that we've had here in the Human Capital Office. And despite all of our efforts to recruit, it's been very difficult to find staff. Honestly, it's no secret there's an extreme shortage of job applicants currently due to the pandemic nationwide in all fields. We just heard about the bus company. And then now, especially with teachers, and even more so in those hard-to-fill areas that are identified by the Connecticut State Department of Education. Hiring these specialized shortage areas has become extremely competitive, as I mentioned. And many districts are offering teachers more money and bringing them in at very high salaries that are very difficult to compete with. Due to this, we have lost many teachers, especially in special education. As you can see, I'm about to review our current vacancies. In many cases, during the exit exams, all the teachers have highlighted that they're leaving because I've shared more money. And in some cases, it's a difference of a salary of $20,000 to $30,000 more than what we're paying here in Waterbury, which makes it extremely difficult to compete. Unfortunately, at this time, we have a total of 130 vacancies. We have six bilingual vacancies, 37 in special education, 10 in CTE, 14 math teacher vacancies, three speech and language vacancies, six art teachers, and five science teachers. As you know, we've been, we've worked hard on implementing a sign-on incentive with the parameters of what we can offer within terms of teacher salaries and the contract that we have. We're going to continue to try to recruit. And we really want to focus on partnering with universities and focusing on our Go Your Own initiatives. Dr. Ruffin, you want to chime in?
Thank you. Yes, this continues to be a challenge and with other districts across the state. You know, we've recognized this is a major challenge, especially for the five larger districts in Connecticut. But that does not mean that we have given up. We're going to continue to work tirelessly. And we are going to also utilize all of our resources, including alternative ways of being able to certify existing staff or certifying them perhaps in more than one content or more than one area so that some of these shortages can be taken. And as I previously shared with the board, there are other innovative ways that we are attempting to be able to fill some of the void that we have. But I do want to thank all of our existing teachers for their dedication and continued work and commitment to Waterbury. And we want to make certain that we continue to value them and show that we value them in ways that are meaningful to them as we move forward. I've asked Doreen Bialo to also give a very quick overview as I assured the board that you would be kept abreast of all of the funding sources, especially ESRs, the SR1, SR2, and the ARPESR, so that you would know on a regular basis where we are in each one of those. And so, Doreen, you may want to start off, and you and I can just go back and forth on any one of those if you'd like.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Good evening, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners. As Dr. Ruffin stated, we want to make sure that we're providing the information on the ESR funding. As you know, they're in three categories. We have ESR1, ESR2, and then the ARPESR, also known as ESR3. ESR1 began March of 2020. It has an ending date for the grant to be spent by September of 2022. The total grant was $9,394,519. It was broken up in two sections. There was a public portion at $8,462,310 and a non-public portion of $932,209. ESR1 was broken up with the non-public portion because it was providing equitable services. ESR2 and ARPESR3 does not. That is all public portion money. So you can see under the public portion of our $8.4 million, to date, we have fenced or encumbered a little over $6.7 million, and we still have a balance of close to $1.7 million. Under the non-public, they have $685,000 expended with a balance of $247,000. A lot of the ESR1 on the public portion was spent on a lot of technology, PPE, and some ventilation repairs was probably the majority of where that funding got spent. ESR2 began in December of 2020. It has an ending date of September of 2023. That's the total grant of $41,651,124,000. As you know, that was broken up into five priorities areas. To date, there has been $449,597 expensed and encumbered with a balance, year-to-date balance currently at $37.6 million. Currently, in ESR2, we have budgeted here was the facility study with SLAM Collaborative Incorporated. And they have begun the beginning phase of that study. As a matter of fact, next week, they will be piloting our school at Generali to begin an important phase of the project. And with the rest of the funding there, there is a lot of RFPs and contracts that are currently underway. And as you know, a lot will be depending on the spending of this based on the study. So as you can see, if you go back to ESR1, we're in pretty good shape on the spending there. I think once the study gets concluded and along with all the RFPs and the procurement process here, we will be under the way of spending a good portion of ESR2 as well. ARPESR3, that began in May of 2021. The ending date of that grant will be September of 2024. That total grant is $89,691,176. That grant application was really submitted, just submitted to the State Department of Education on August 16. So not a lot has happened here yet. And again, there is a good portion based on the facility study. Just to go back to ESR2, some of the funding that you saw being spent already was, as you remember, we have some staff retention here. So we have like a few of our physicians that were in the maintenance department, our network, our network man, sorry, network manager. Is that right, Will? Ivan? I forget his title. And all of our guidance counselors, thank you, are in here. So you'll see that some of their salaries as we begin the new fiscal year are budgeted here. We also allotted money for the food service deficit that has been already encumbered and to make the food service department whole again. And also our summer program and camps that we had this July and through August were already spent here. And we will also be charging facility study here. So that's some of the items already expended or encumbered. ARPESR3, it's just very minimal amount. You'll see we have $246,000 to date expended or encumbered. That's some is for some professional services already happening, the placcape at State Street, and the replacement of an HVAC issue with the chiller at one of our schools. So if, Dr. Ruffin, you want to add to anything to this?
You did a very thorough job of what we've done so far. And our plan is to continuously update the board on where we are as we continue to move forward in all of the ESR expenditures. Okay. This is the extent of the PowerPoint. But Darren, if you will take the PowerPoint out of the way, I'll be able to see the board. Just as a final note or final comment, I believe that there are a couple of our staff who are here today that were not previously introduced to you. We have Mr. Jerry Gay, who has joined us as the Contract Manager. We've long awaited his position and his arrival here to help us manage all of the contracts that we had and all the contracts that we have and the ones that we anticipate having as we move forward. So we'd like to welcome you, Jerry. Additionally, as I mentioned before, I very, I don't know whether you had an opportunity to meet formally yet, Dr. Laura White, who joins us as the Director of Equity and Inclusion. So we'd like to welcome her. And she started last week, I think, right? That was your very first day. And of course, while you have already met and you already know Jade Dopey, who is our new Assistant Superintendent, she also serves, she's also one of my mentors, or mentees. And so she, as she works on her advanced degree, and also Dr. Joseph Johnson, who joins us as he works on his certification for superintendency through the Yukon NEAC School of Education in their Leadership Program. Both are my mentees, and I'm very pleased that they're here in either an official capacity as the role that they serve or being here on first-time meeting as a mentee and continuing to learn. So I'm very pleased to welcome both of them tonight and introduce them to our board. That concludes any presentations that I have. We'll answer questions for you, Commissioners, if you have any.
Okay, Dr. Ruffin, if I may. I see, okay, Commissioner Sweetie, any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Brown, anyone else have questions? Just kind of raise your hand, please. All right, I see Commissioner Serrano O'Donnell. Okay, so we will begin with Commissioner Sweetie, then followed by Commissioner Brown.
Doreen, on the ESR1, the non-public portion, I assume that we're acting as judiciary on that. Are we having a struggle getting them to pay that, to spend that down because we're halfway into the grant but not near halfway on spending on that one?
On the non-public portion, no. We don't anticipate a problem with that. They do follow our city procurement process like they do with any of the entitlement funds that they receive because there's non-public portions in our Title I or Title II grants. So this is handled the same way. And no, we don't foresee any issues so far.
You don't see any struggles with spending that?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Because I believe non-public, they had $932,000, and they already have about $685,000 already expended and encumbered. So we still have a whole year for them to spend the remaining $247,000. So I don't foresee that that should be an issue.
Okay. All right.
All set, Commissioner Sweetie?
Yep.
All right, Commissioner Brown?
Thanks. I just had a question about our contracts with the busing companies. You know, we've been reading all summer about shortages in bus drivers and so forth. And this is, this is not specific to Waterbury. I mean, a lot of the districts were finding it difficult. Was there any communication with the Governor's Office or the Department of Motor Vehicle to streamline their process so that we could, you know, alleviate some of these delays? I mean, it just seems that this was not just a Waterbury problem. And the second part of my question is, in the contracts, are there any penalties, you know, in the contract for not delivering the service that they, they said they were going to deliver?
I can take the first part of that question, Commissioner Brown. I did have a conversation regarding the process and what the delay is with DMV. Since they switched over to the COVID protocols and everybody has to schedule an appointment, it's along the longer lines. Jeff did say that he's going to reach out to, you know, the local delegation to see if they can make some changes or expedite it just for bus drivers because there is such a shortage in all, the whole state of Connecticut. So, but it is COVID-related. You can keep playing COVID for everything. But you know, if you try to get a DMV now, you just can't walk in. You need to schedule an appointment.
I guess I would just recommend that we go straight to the Governor's Office and maybe get our Mayor O'Leary, who seems to have a really good relationship. Because, you know, this, he could call the Because, uh, you know, this, he could call the Commissioner of the D M V and see if we can't work something out. So I I guess I just was hoping that we could solve this uh a little bit more expeditiously. Uh, okay, anyway, it is what it is, I guess, but it just seems, uh, you know, it's not a good way to do business uh in this circumstances. How about the contracts and the penalties?
I have not read the contract, I don't know if Tara or or Doreen can add anything uh on the contract, but I don't know if there's any penalties put into there.
Sure, I I think typically, um, there's a clause in all of the city contracts, and I believe it's in both the All-Star and the Durham contract, that if the um services are not delivered, that that is cause for terminating the contract. And I believe that is the penalty clause therein, so that if it's a three-year agreement, typically you can terminate early um if they haven't delivered the services.
I mean, obviously, nobody wants to eliminate the contract right now. Uh, I was just, didn't know if there was a penalty because, uh, you know, for per day penalty or whatever, uh, given, you know, the circumstances. Uh, but anyway, it doesn't sound like there is a penalty for not delivering the service. Um, uh, my second question has to do with the um the update on staffing, it sounds like you're working very hard, thank you so much. I just had a question, how many of our staff are actually in an alternative route to certification or in a program to get certified? What's the number?
All right, I made myself, we currently have three uh, three pairs are in the relay program. We also have twenty-four student teachers uh currently. Uh, we have nine from Next Gen and then we have four from the Yukon Teacher Residence Program currently.
Uh huh. Okay, all right, and do we anticipate uh any more going into the relay program or other other programs?
Yes, we do, we are, we're trying to work with the state right now to partner with some of the universities. It's a program out of Central Connecticut that we're trying to work with, which is uh would help us have a direct pipeline for uh special education.
Okay, great, okay, okay, well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Brown, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Serrano or Dorno, would you please go ahead?
Uh, thank you, um, just to piggyback a little bit of what Commissioner Brown, um, she was kind of reading my mind. So some of the questions uh she did ask, um, Mr. Will Zuda, how are you? Um, obviously, due to like some of the safety issues with the busing, um, I don't know if you guys have been stuck behind buses lately, but is there something that you can maybe reevaluate the amount of bus stops? What what I mean by that is some streets have, you know, short, like I think people could maybe possibly walk a little further, maybe the middle school and high schools. I know some of the stops are elementary, but maybe to reevaluate it. Um, I know I have been in school not that long ago, but I had a little distant walking to get to a bus stop um a- at one point. So maybe that would alleviate some of the timeline or the tardiness, i- if that makes any sense. I just feel like I notice more when I'm stuck behind a bus, they stop like in every corner that I feel like sometimes, and they're with adults, so it's not like they're small kids, I don't expect the elementary school kids, but that they can walk a little further, uh, as a, just an observation, I happen to be stuck on a lot of buses. Um, so just maybe take a look at that, see if that would help alleviate that for number one. Number two, one of the questions I know that Liz has mentioned, and I'm sure you guys probably already did this. I know we've had issues in the past with buses needing repairs and sometimes I've seen like Peter Pan buses. Have you looked into possibly hiring or temporarily working with like these coach buses since they already have their certification to maybe help alleviate the extra route for some of these bus drivers?
Um, no, we haven't reached out to any um coach or any of the commercial bus driving companies. Uh, there's just a shortage statewide, actually nationwide, so, um, you know, you just really, I mean, New Haven was offering a five thousand dollar incentive, all this sign on and they couldn't get anybody.
Wow.
It's a, it's a major issue nationally, it's a big issue here in Connecticut, I mean, I turn on the news every night and there's, they're interviewing some district that's having trouble, so, um, you know.
Now, is it? Thank you, now, is it because there's shortage because there are employees that haven't returned due to COVID medical reasons? Or their their employees come back and there is just a shortage because some, you know what I mean? Like, i- is there some that are just out temporarily because of COVID restrictions?
Um, that I can't answer too, I mean, that, remember, they're hired by the bus company, not hired by us. But one of the questions I did ask Jeff to find out for us is what what their um retention rate was. And, you know, they they say their bus drivers average about ten years with them. So they don't have high turnover, uh, just can't find bodies, so.
Okay, so now on that note, obviously, the the safety issue, as as we've known, on the overcrowded of the buses, um, where there are students that are standing or, you know, we're trying to do these safety protocols with social distancing and it's almost impossible on a bus, I I totally get that. But when I see students standing, you know, that that's where it's a concern and I and I and I get it. I've been hearing a lot of parents, you know, concerns, but um, I know I mentioned to you about the bus app, which was very helpful for me when my kids were in school. Um, and I know you mentioned that the bus I T staff, there's been a lot of parents trying to log on and the system crashed. Um, but I do want maybe Sujata to, you know, start promoting that again, to maybe just let the families know. We obviously got new transfers, new students, so maybe, I don't know how they're communicating. You know, I don't have kids in school anymore, just to let parents aware of that app. But more importantly, I know that my son missed the bus a couple of times because I'll still see the bus in the parking lot and we just didn't realize that that the bus driver was out and we have a sub. So he would miss the bus because the bus was already en route, but the app never updated it. So just a suggestion for, I know you don't have, you know, um, you don't, you don't deal with that, it is the bus I T. But I think it's a useful tool for parents to be able to somewhat track their student or on their way home or on their way to school.
Yeah, so so to answer the first part of that question, uh, with the overcrowding, I mean, uh, we have, we, you know, as Doctor stated earlier, we are in constant communication with schools, uh, we know, talking to principals every day. Um, their their work, where they're coming up with new protocol to ensure that buses are not overcrowded, make sure the kids get on the right bus. Uh, we're having now, kids want to jump on the bus with their friends and five or six kids might jump on and they really can't be. Um, so it's, it's hard to monitor all that, but you know, they're, they're, they have teachers out there now checking kids as they get on buses. The bus company is doing a second run, so no more overcrowding of a bus. Make sure that, um, we we fill it to capacity as much as we can safely. Send it out and come back and pick them up or send another bus out there to pick up the overflow kids and drop them off. Um, it's been a challenge, but we're working through a lot of it right now and and every day's been getting a lot better.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, I do want to commend you guys. Uh, it's, I mean, we only get to see a portion of what goes on behind closed doors, but to just see even, you you know, you will, Dr. Ruffin, everybody, you know, everything that you guys are doing, I I can't even imagine. Um, so I do want to give you guys, you know, an applause and thank you guys for all your hard work. Um, one more last thing that I do want to mention, Dr. Ruffin, and and maybe you will. Um, this is the last uh question or comment. Um, obviously, the overcrowded in the hallways for dismissal. Um, I think someone did say a positive thing about Career Academy that I think they're dismissing by like floors or by like odd numbers or something to avoid the rush for either first thing in the morning or in the afternoon. I don't know, I know you guys constantly have communication with principals and so forth, but I'm I'm just trying to figure out, this is not the first time we've gone back to school. So why do you think it's, we're having this overcrowded issue or, you know, like, does that make any sense? Like, I'm I'm just a little confused as to, you know, is it just the busing situation, the drop off? I know Dr. Ruffin mentioned there's a lot of parents dropping kids off and it's just been chaotic. And usually the first week or two of of school is chaotic. Um, but do you have like a sort of a response to that?
Yes, I'd like to share um what what I believe contributes to all of that. Um, for um a number, over fifty percent of our children have not been in a school uh for over sixteen months. And uh, and and now we are acutely aware that when students are back in school, that everyone remembers that last year, we did not have a problem keeping people six feet apart. And this year, we're not going to be able to keep them three feet apart. But now they have masks in addition to that. And so while I believe the schools always looked at their uh entry and exit at the beginning of the school year, uh, very few times have high schools have to develop routes that might allow students to go down one stairwell while another group of students going up upstairs through another stairwell. So that's considerations that schools are having to do now in the COVID environment that is different than we had to do two years ago. Um, I I believe that when we're looking at maybe a procedure that might happen at Career Academy, we also realize that Career Academy is significantly smaller in enrollment sizes than our three comprehensive highs, comprehensive high schools, which are all over a thousand students. So their strategy for how they're going to dismiss students, which hallways, um, yeah, is a little different or a- actually is a lot different. And I believe that all of the schools have been working on, what is it going to look like now that we know that the hallways are crowded? And how can we utilize maybe a different schedule of dismissal or passing periods to allow for us to have less students in the hall?
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin, very good point, I didn't even think about that. But again, I just want to applaud you guys on all your hard work and efforts putting out all those fires. So thank you and thank you, Vice President Harvey.
Okay, you're welcome, any other questions? Okay. I don't see anyone waving. No other questions? All right, let me just make um a few comments, no one else has anything to say. Um, I want to congratulate congratulate the staff also. A lot of things, you know, happened, the beginning of uh school, first day of school. And um, you know, that kind of hit home uh with the busing, uh, because uh, it was, uh, you know, my my sister walked into my house and she's like, I can't do this. Like, what is wrong with the buses, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so, you know, I witnessed that personally. You know, I usually don't mention, you know, the personal effect of that. So I kind of, you know, the calls I was getting, the 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 text messages, et cetera. So I kind of felt that the first day. Um, but the app, um, I want to congratulate our Board of Education, the Waterbury Board of Education. We voted on that app in two thousand and sixteen. It was uh promoted uh pretty much by yours truly, uh, because we had that app. New Haven had that app and a smaller district had it. We were fortunate enough to get that app because Durham was changing their buses um and upgrading their buses. And they have with the newer buses, G P S, so that allowed for the tracking. Um, in regards to promoting that app, each and every single school should be promoting that app, possibly the second day um of school. We should have that application on our website. And each and every liaison, parent liaison, should be assisting our parents to with that app. Uh, because I think that, I'm not going to say it's going to alleviate the complaints, but at least the parents would know where their buses are and know where their children are. So um, every single school year, we should be promoting that unless something newer comes along. So so I would hope, um, you know, that we would uh do that. Sujata, uh, parent liaisons and whoever, however we can advertise that is fine. Also, um, I I was concerned about the communication, I think with the parents. As long as we communicate with them, what we're doing, okay, to improve upon the situation, I think, I think they'll understand. This was something um that was a little bit different. Um, you know, we know we have the, you know, somewhat of chaos going on the first day of school, but this delay was somewhat different. Um, so, you know, I think with the parents, I'm sure there's some listening in, a a lot listening in, that as long as we keep that lines of communication open with our parents, I think we'll be um, we'll be in pretty good shape. Okay? So if no one else has anything to say, Dr. Ruffin, are you all set? Dr. Ruffin?
Yes, Commissioner.
You're all set.
Yeah, television, your television program is not far away.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Ruffin. All right, so I will turn now to um item number nine, Will Zuda, uh, committee, um, um, building and school facilities uh use, uh, item number ten. And uh, yeah, item number nine, item number ten, Will, please. You're There you go.
Yeah. After you figure, I figure that out one day. Good evening, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin. With the approval of the Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, Superintendent Schools recommends approval of the use of school facilities by groups and organizations, subject to the fees and insurance as required. Um, groups that are requesting waivers are Knights of Lithuania, for St. Joe's Gym, Kingsbury Reunion, Bunker Hill Reunion, Waterbury Pal, Waterbury Nights. Groups not subject to the fee waiver are Historic Overlook Community Club, Upper Fulton Park Neighborhood Association, Waterbury Nights, D M T Sports, Waterbury Youth Football and Charity.
All right. Thank you, Will, any questions there from Commissioners regarding the request? Okay, all right, so if not, uh, we will move on to item number eleven, Superintendent's Notification, are there any questions? Okay, Commissioner Stango?
Thank you, just a question for Dr. Ruffin. Doctor, I'm looking at the list of of new hires and one of the teachers, uh, three quarters of the way down has been assigned to central office. Um, can you shed a little light on that?
Um, Mr. Mendoza, do you know which area Mr. Stango is talking about?
No, I'm looking at it, no, I'm not sure which staff member he's.
It's Susan Miller, Susan Miller. It's saying Susan Miller, Central Office.
Isn't she the new math supervisor?
Supervisor, yes.
Looks to me that she's on the W T A list and should just be on the S A list.
Okay, we'll make note of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay, I'm nothing, all right? If there are no further questions or comments, uh, we will move into um executive session. Commissioner Sweetie, if you could make that motion, please?
Motion to convene an executive session for discussion concerning the employment, evaluation, health or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Go ahead.
Doctor, who will be joining you?
Uh, Mr. Mendoza, Ms. Shaw.
Okay. Thank you, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? All right, we'll move into executive session.
I'm going to put everybody into a waiting.
Thank you, and I need a motion to return to regular order of business from executive session, Commissioner Sweetie?
Motion to return from executive sessions in the regular order of business, votes were taken.
I need a second?
Second.
All those in fa- discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, hearing none, I will need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Thank you very much. We have a special meeting at seven o'clock, folks. We cannot begin until seven, so.
Go eat.
You may take a mini break and we will start right at seven, Dave. Thank you and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Special Meeting this evening, Thursday, September 2nd at 7:00 PM. We will begin with a silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Silent prayer. All right, thank you, everyone. Can we have Pledge of Allegiance together? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And roll call, please. Carrie?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
Here.
Commissioner Orso?
Yeah.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yeah.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Van Stone?
Present.
President Vigano? Your quorum.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. All right, and with that, we will go to item number four. Committee of the whole, Commissioner Brown, if you would.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Committee of the Whole moves to approve the appointment of Dr. Sam as school medical advisor per Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-20,005.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, Carrie, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Carrie. All right. I'm sorry?
I didn't hear Commissioner Van Stone called.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioner Brown, item 4.2, please.
The Committee of the Whole moves to approve a professional services agreement with Dr. Sam to perform school medical advisor services as required by Connecticut General Statutes.
All right, thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All right, no discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Commissioner Brown, item number 4.3, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Committee of the Whole moves to adopt the findings of fact of the impartial hearing officer and the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to non-renew the teaching contract of Suzanne Hoy for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second. Thank you for the second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion?
Excuse me, Vice President Harvey, I think that needs to be done by roll call.
You want to do it by roll call? Okay.
I believe so.
Back up. All right, so Commissioner Brown, just read that, read that motion again, please.
Yes, item 4.3, the Committee of the Whole moves to adopt the findings of fact of the impartial hearing officer and the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to non-renew the teaching contract of Suzanne Hoy for the 2021-2022 school year.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Yeah, that's a personnel matter, so thank you, Attorney Shaw. Okay, so let's move on to item number five, Committee of Personnel. Commissioner Stango, please.
Sure. Item 5.1. The Committee on School Personnel moves to approve the lateral transfer request of Michelle Eckler from Reading English Language Arts Supervisor, grade six through 12, to Supervisor of Technology for Teaching and Learning, effective immediately as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Can you get a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, thank you. Discussion? All right, no discussion? All those, okay, we're going to have roll call, roll call, this personnel. So roll call, please, Carrie.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi? Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Motion passes, all right. Item number six, Commissioner Orso?
Item 6.1. The Committee on Finance moves to approve an agreement with Connecticut Education Network, subjects to any non-substantive changes approved by the Corporation Council's office for installation of dark fiber lease and internet access.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All right, no discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
I have a question because it's a contract. Should it be a roll call vote again? No, okay.
No, no, personnel only. Well, not only, but. All right, so again, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? No opposition, motion passes. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? All right, we're done. Everyone have a wonderful Labor Day. Enjoy yourselves.
Yeah. Everybody, good night.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.
Last year, 109 people in the city of Waterbury lost their life to an overdose. But 424 lives were saved by the city's many first responders. And every life saved is a chance for recovery. There are a range of treatment options for those who struggle with opioid use disorder. With the right care, support, and treatment, recovery is possible. To learn more, come see me. I'm Cameron Breen. I'm living proof that recovery is possible. And I'm an overdose response technician with the City of Waterbury.